So what I do, I communicate my And so I send out these things to this So I'll, I'll add you to that. Oh, Nikki Gore. Look, look, you don't, oh wait, oh wait, I'm sorry. Look, I'm, I'm gonna say this. Right. Yeah, yeah. You're here now, here now. Right, right. Home sit, it's, take away my home sit, yeah, it's, no, it's, yeah, that'd be a good one, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Appreciate it. I see you get, you see you got that 70 vibe with that, that purse right there. All right, take care. Wait a minute, I had, I had, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hope Pendergrass, yeah. All right, uh, thank you for that. Again, welcome, and, uh, for those who are staying, or those who just come in, we welcome you to our work session for 114, 20, 25 is, I didn't think I would, I would be around to say 2025, but, but I'm still here. Amen. We like to ask everyone that has any kind of electronic, uh, devices, uh, either put them on silent, or vibrate, or turn them off, wha- whatever your pleasure. At this time, I, I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Brown, if he was so, uh, pleasure us to do the prayer and the pledge.
Yes, sir, be also ready. Let us please stand.
I know you talk well.
Eternal God, our Father, we're so thankful for this day. We're thankful for the lives that we're able to impact here in Griffin Spalding. We send special prayers to our scholars, to our teachers, and to all other employees that are doing the work here. We ask that decisions that we make, that they be pleasing in your sight. We ask that you continue to guide us and keep us, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us look to the flag for the pledge.
Fifty leades to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, uh, for that, Mr. Brown, uh, uh, I, I would pass this on to your mom, let her know, so she can be a proud mom.
Man, you.
Can, can we get a motion, uh, to adopt the agenda?
It's very demure, sir.
We got a motion. Give it a second, give it a second. Okay, put it on the books, Ms., uh, Sherry, she, she seconded the motion for the first time on the board.
Yeah!
All right, all right, she is official now. All right, all in favor, show by raising your right hand. Motion passed, thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Simmons, uh, he gave me a little nudge to remind everyone that our other board member, Ms. Register, she's still online, and she's present with us, not able to be here physically, uh, but she is online, and we thank her for that. I could send agenda, uh, can we get a motion to accept that as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion, can we get a second? Second, we got, we got a second.
She's on the roll.
All in favor, show by raising your right hand. All right, motion carries. Yeah, we, I think Sue trying to break her in. Don't break her down, break her in. All right, the first order business for, uh, 2025 is appointment of board officers. At this time, I would, uh, like to open up the floor for, for nominations. Any, any nominations?
I'd nominate Sue McDonald for Vice Chair.
Okay, we receive Sue McDonald as the Vice Chair. Any other nominations?
Mr. Holmes, I'd like to, uh, nominate Mr. Brown as for Chair.
Okay, we got Mr. Brown as the Chair. All right, I now, I, uh, officially ask that we close the nominations at this time, and, uh, like to ask whether y'all would like to take them separate, uh, just do them combined, since we only have one for each position.
Our Board Attorney, are we able to do them as one, or should they be done separately?
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll do it, we'll do it that way. Oh, okay, okay. We'll, we'll start with the, uh, the, uh, the Chair position with, uh, Mr. Centele, uh, Brown, and, uh, that's the only nomination, so all in favor of Mr. Brown being the Board Chair, show by raising the right hand. All right, motion carries. We have, uh, Sue McDonald as the Vice Chair, can we, uh, have a vote, uh, on Sue McDonald as the Vice Chair by showing the right, right, raising the right hand? All right, motion carries. All right, with that said, Mr. Brown, we're gonna ask that you come down and take your rightful place, and, uh, you, you can come here and I, I'll take that in, Slott.
Yeah, I'll just stay right here for right now, I'm good, I can stay right here.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, next we have on the agenda is Presentations and Discussion. First up is our FY24 Audit Presentation, Malden and Jenkins. It'll be done by Mr. Byron Jones, AKA Money Bag Yo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chair, congratulations, and like I said earlier, uh, welcome Ms. Weldon, and welcome Ms. Register online. Uh, I want to call up Hope Pendergrass to the podium, she's our lead auditor, lead management partner, I'm not sure of the exact title for Malden and Jenkins, I want to remind the Board, uh, you approved a, a three-year agreement with Malden and Jenkins about three years ago, I think this is the third year of that, so I'll be coming back to you soon, uh, and I just am really proud of the work they've done, I know the Board was used to a, a tenured, um, firm prior to them, but they've really done some good work, and they are the leading auditors for the governments in the state that are not audited by the Georgia Department of Audits. But I really want to, um, just thank Hope, because really, her staff has done a lot, just with things going on, such as semi-monthly, getting instituted in the middle of all the audit, and munis going live, payroll in two different years, staff turnover, and anything else that we've dealt with in Griffin Spalding, to have a good audit, and I'm really proud of her to come share that with you today. Hope.
Byron, good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you all today. I believe in front of you, you have three documents, you should have the, um, Auditors' Discussion Analysis, the Performance Audit on your Spalding revenues, and lastly, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Um, I'm not gonna go through these documents in detail, I'm just gonna give a summary and point out a few things, and then I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. The first thing that I want to talk about is the fact that you all do prepare an annual comprehensive financial report, and why that's important is, is that you all go above and beyond the basic requirements. Um, there's only, there's 180 school districts in the state of Georgia, only probably about 15 of them go above and beyond and do this annual comprehensive financial report. So you are to be commended as you are, because you take the opportunity to go above and beyond what is just the basic requirement. So this, this document includes not only your audited financial statements, but it also includes a lot of statistical information that gives you tenure trend information on your district and on your community. Some highlights are, I'll, I'll lead with the headline, you all received an unmodified, or what we call a clean opinion for fiscal year 2024, that ended 6/30/2024. That's what you want, you want a clean opinion. Byron talked about the fund balance, your general fund, fund balance did end the year at about 45.2 million. If you were to incur your expenditures evenly over the year, which of course you do not, um, that would account for about 20 weeks of fund balance, so you're talking about plus or minus about five months. So that is relatively strong, but, you know, most advisors will tell you, you need to have six months of reserve in the bank, right? So that's, that's what that is. Um, as Byron mentioned, there is a state law that capture fund balance at 15%, so at this point, y'all are over that, but I did notice in your FY25 budget, as Mr. Jones talked about, you did adopt a, um, reduction in fund balance in your budget of about four and a half million, so you're on a path to get down in compliance with your fund balance there. But as he mentioned when he was talking about 581, there are a lot of costs that you all don't have any control over, specifically health insurance, I mean, I read today where the governor is gonna be increasing the health insurance to what, 1885 per person, per month? So, like Byron said, they fund the, the certified positions, but they don't fund all the classified positions, so those are the type of expenditures that you all don't have any control over, and why it's important to have reserves to fund those kinds of things that you don't have control over. As far as how you did in relation to your budget, you did budget for your fiscal year '24, not '25 or '26 that you're about to get started on, but for '24, you budgeted to go into fund balance about 5.4 million, you ended up actually adding to fund balance a little bit, about 900,000, so when you talk about how you did and compared to your budget, you actually had a positive variance of about 6.3 million. Someone asked earlier about grants, in addition to our financial statement audit that we do for you all, we also do what's called a single audit, which is where we look at your federal programs, you all expended about, um, 30 million in federal expenditures in 2024, that is expected to go down significantly due to the sunset of the SRA funding, so you won't have as much going forward. We don't audit every program, but for this year, we did audit your school nutrition program, which made up about seven and a half million, about 30 million, and again, we had no findings, you had a clean report. So that is a summary of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, as I mentioned earlier, you also, also have before you the Performance Audit on your Spalding revenues, this is where we take a look at how you perform as far as best practices, and are you spending Spalding revenues in accordance with a voter-approved Spalding resolution? Again, we had a clean report in regard to that, we determined everything to be in order. The last document that you have before you is what's called our Auditors' Discussion Analysis, the auditing standards require us to communicate certain things to you all as the governing body, so this is a mechanism in which we do that, that information is included in there, as well as some summaries of the financials for the year, and we end the document with information on upcoming GASB standards, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is the regulatory body that kind of says, this is how you report things in a governmental environment, they're constantly changing the way that they do things, and so we like to educate everybody about, hey, these are some changes that are coming down the pipe as far as financial reporting, and that might impact your district, and so we've included that information as well. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, are there any questions that you have? Mr. Holmes, I know this is your, this is one of your babies.
I have, you know, haven't, haven't had, had a chance to go through it, so I reserve any questions. But we want to keep the door open.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones knows how to find me.
Well, we, you gonna, you gonna roll him under the bus, we. If I have any, I just defer to him.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Pendergrass.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up on our agenda is the Archway Update from our Griffin Spalding Archway professional, Dr. Shanissa Alfred.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Happy New Year-ish. I am excited to bring you the Archway Partnership Update, and just so you know, first of all...
Take it down to the midget.
He tried to say Dr. Warren, okay. Just a couple of things, um, I look forward to speaking with our two new board members, I'm excited to set up time to speak with you. You have a couple of things that I've given to you, the first is the 2025 Achievement Prosperity Annual Meeting Flyer, if you would like to come to that, and that's where you have all of your collaborative organizations in the city and county come together to talk about, uh, collaborating across the board. I also gave you the 2025 calendar from Archway, and it showcases all of our communities that the Archway Partnership works with, we have nine Archway communities, and then we have some connected resilient communities that we work with, so you'll get to see a little bit about those. Um, in terms of the updates, your quarterly update, there are a few things I want to share with you. First is that, uh, we have our Spalding County Animal Shelter visit, we have a group of students that is working on developing process flow documents for the Spalding County Animal Shelter, which is really needed, they got a chance to visit the shelter, as we know, uh, your shelter is at capacity, and so they're looking at ways to help with that. Um, for those who live near Chulie Road, um, the bridge replacement project that our students is working on will help with, uh, the road closures that happen during heavy inclement weather, that road gets washed out quite a bit, so we have students working on, um, a design to help with that bridge. We had some students working on a sustainability landscape project on US Business 1941 toward the UGA Griffin and, uh, Southern Crescent Technical College up toward Ellis Road area, and so they gave their presentation, uh, about landscape projects, and we have other projects coming that way regarding US Business 1941. I'm excited about the fact that we have three projects that will be going on in Quarries Edge Park in terms of not just about wildlife and habitat there, but also to focus on the stormwater runoff and the trash and debris that happens during heavy rains. Also excited to note that we did our Mental Health Issue Work Group kickoff in November, and the purpose of the work group is to increase awareness of mental health issues in the community, right now, the focus is on the homeless population as well as our veterans. And so there were more than 20 practitioners and community members who attended that kickoff, if anybody here or online would like to be a part of that, uh, you could reach out to the Archway, Archway Partnership here in Spalding County, and we can add you to that group. And then the two things that affect, um, the school board specifically is, you all should, well, I'll go back, the first one is, um, the work groups are working to develop programming and resources for the community, when it comes to life skills and employability skills, we are working to figure out all of the resources that are offered here in Griffin and Spalding, and understand the skills that are needed for employment by working with the local businesses and the, uh, local industries in the area. But the last piece that I'm excited about, that I just found out about last week, is the fact that if you got a utility bill from Griffin, then you got an educational flyer that highlights, uh, the work that's going on at GRCCA, uh, Southern Crescent Technical College, and UGA Griffin, and so we have already started to receive a return on that investment from those three entities, and with that, that is my report for you, and I'll answer any questions at this time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Alfred, board members, are there any questions at this time?
I just have a comment, Mr. Brown.
Go ahead, Madam Vice Chair.
I was one of the recipients of that, um, newsletter, and I was just so happy to see it and read it, and it keeps us informed as to what's going on, so I just wanted to say thank you.
And that came out of the Education Issue Work Group, so if anybody wants to participate in that, please let me know.
Thank you so much. All right, next up on our agenda is the Safety and Security Update, Chief Donald Britt.
Got props. Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, board members, Dr. Simmons, Happy New Year. Here to give us update on safety and security. Of course, here we have our non-negotiables, our focus areas, let me see, enrollment, attendance, discipline, and solving. Our vision, mission statement. Our roadmap to success on the safety, excuse me, present safe and supportive learning environments for safety. Why safety matters. I want to read the whole thing, just second line, the safety of our students and staff is not just a priority, is the foundation upon which all learning is built. The kids, students don't feel safe, won't be able to learn, safety matters. New law came out, Safe Schools Act, 2023, April 2023, on the Jima, uh, where each school in the state of Georgia, they would have to have a school safety plan at the school, uh, what we do here is administrators turn their plans into us, Mr. Stikes and I, we meet with our MA Director, which is Chief Polk, uh, our law enforcement partners, uh, public safety, fire department, we meet, go over those plans, and each plan is entered into the WELP portal, uh, from Chief Polk, new state law. And true to drills, the drill we have every year in September, they must be submitted to the state by October 1st. Mr. Stikes and I put out a calendar to all the principals, late July, early August, made the dates, when we come out, we personally went out to each school, uh, and witnessed these drills, and shooter drills, slash active shooter drills. Safety walkthroughs, uh, came from, uh, a Jima rep, who's Clint Westbrook, Mr. Westbrook came up, year before last, once every two years he comes up, we went to every school, looked at safety, what we could do to improve safety, uh, where we're doing well, in safety, at each school. All of these are reported into the WELP portal for Jima, for the state, it's mandated, uh, by this bill. The Insurance Commissioner's Office, fire drills must be done monthly, every month, in October, of course, we have our state fire drill, which is mandated, fire personnel comes out to each school, uh, and monitors and assists with the fire drill. In November, February, you can, you can substitute the fire drills for the other drills, November, February, one of those, the fire department comes out, uh, they will be out February 5th of this year for our mandated fire drill to assist with the fire drills. The fire drills, three of the drills, are reported in this site, the Fire Commissioner's Office. Previously funded, uh, initiatives before I started 2022, RSVP, of course, uh, LED lighting, metal detectors, which I already had, the Garrett metal detectors, rapture, audio enhancement, uh, upgrading cameras, all of these were done before 2022. New initiatives, uh, various each Spalding and Underours, new grant, school safety grant that the governor gave us, we have a wish list, we sent a wish list out to all schools, the principals, admin staff, sent us back a wish list, whether it was more fencing, more lights, more cameras at their school. I'm happy to say that, thanks, thanks to Bruce for his help, four of our elementary schools already have fencing over the holiday break around their playgrounds, uh, that was done over Christmas break. Uh, defibrillators, we have 25, there's things that they were going out, the deadline on some of them was trying to get new ones, 25 have been ordered through our grant, and we ordered 25 more in the fall of 2025, for a total of 50 AEDs for next school year. Our metal detectors evolved, of course, Griffin High School, Spalding High School, open gate, we have four open gates, I'll show you pictures shortly, were donated by the Sheriff's Department, we use it at football stadium, they're lightweight, they can be moved, we've also used one at AZK's graduation auditorium and at honors night. We also bought two on our grant, for one for Spalding High, one for AZK. We have a meeting coming up next week, a couple of dates for our middle school principals to come out and see how they work, in case they want one, one or two, and at some point for elementary schools also, so we have the grant, we have these funds, so we want to make sure we keep everyone safe. Keyless entry, of course, we use a badge. We have our badges to be able to get in and out of buildings, uh, day and night, or whatever time you go in the buildings. Synthetics. July for fire drills, safety drills, severe weather drills. Uh, of course, if you press a certain amount of times, law enforcement comes, uh, in your building if you press it eight or more times. I'm excited about this next one, emergency go kits. I brought one to show. Came from our grant, idea from Mr. Stikes, great idea. These kits you see here, they have a class, they have a roster, classroom roster inside. They will have tape, uh, gloves, bandages. We order at least 900. We have one for every classroom. Every classroom in our district will get one of these bags. Uh, the top of the bag, the bag will be this color, but the top of the bag will have our GSCS logo on the bag. So those on order, this came from our safety grant. Our partnerships, of course, public safety, we're open house, of course, this is our first year. We had an officer, a deputy, or police officer at every school, open house this school year. We worked the gangs, graduations. We had a gang training back in March, PL Day, Sheriff's Department put on a training for us, how to recognize gangs. Chief Polk helps us always. He was, of course, the EMA Director of the Year of 2023, very helpful. We trained, we talked about weather, last, last week's weather, we had several briefings at EMA office. We have cameras on our buses, audio and visual. And we also have a good relationship with our Public Works Department, city and county. Over the break, right before the break, the last day before the break, Mr. Martin had an issue with on North Side, not North Side, Lakewood, behind North Side apartments in the curve with trees and debris and brush in the curve. The kids are out at bus stop early in the morning, it's dark, the cars are coming around the curb pretty fast. So we met with them that same day, and over the break when we came back, they took care of it. All that was cleaned back, pushed back, cleaned off, so the drivers can see the students and they can see the drivers. Here are just several pictures of what we have. That's the synthetics bag, the stroll, of course, the keyless entry, the evolve at Griffin High, both of those. Open gate, stadium. AZK, the emergency kit, Aphone. These are just some of the initiatives we have so far at GSCS. Finally. Ensuring the safety of all students and schools is crucial responsibility that requires the participation of all stakeholders. Includes teachers, students, parents, school administrators, and the community. It takes all of us to keep our students, faculty, and staff safe. Any questions?
Board members, we heard the presentation from Chief Britt. Are there any questions? Looks like we're recognizing Ms. McDonnell of the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, uh, Mr. Britt, for this, for this. As a former educator myself, safety was always at the forefront. I have a couple of questions that, um, from a constituent in District Five. How did each school spend the 2023 $50,000 to improve safety and security? And in any additional resource, were, did we hire any additional resource officers with the 2024 $45,000 per school money that the state of Georgia allotted to schools?
2023 was for, we combined that, and we got the synthetics with the 2023.
Okay.
Which will cover the whole district, not just each school, we just took those funds for the synthetics. And the last question, you said, were there in additional SROs?
Yes, were any additional SR, SROs, um, purchased, hired?
No, we have.
Hired with the $45,000 for a school.
No, we have one at each middle school, two at Griffin High.
Okay, so with the 2024 monies, then each school was able to perhaps inquire and direct what they would like for their individual schools?
Yes, yes, we had the wish list, they filled out.
Okay.
Uh, Google sheet, put in some things you may want, and we're still in the process of purchasing some of those items.
Okay, very good, thank you. And then one additional comment, um, was that I understand, uh, either the governor or his designees said yesterday that another $58,000 will be coming to each school this year from the budget that will be the upcoming budget?
I think it's upcoming school year, I believe. I saw that too.
And will we do another wish list per school, or is there another? I know the synthetic, is it synthetics? Is that how you pronounce that?
Synthetics, yes.
I just think that's a phenomenal system. Is there any, anything else that, that you feel like our system needs to further protect all of the parties involved?
Security is always evolving. Uh, one thing we need is at some point, more people. We need more people in the, in the schools, elementary schools, so we're working towards that. Uh, we're having meetings discussing things a school may want, their wish list, so, uh, we're working towards that.
All right, thank you. Are you, are you going to stay for the entire meeting?
Yes.
Okay, could I speak with you afterwards? I have a, just a question that off, doesn't need to be made public. I just have a question to ask you after the meeting, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
No problem, um, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. Are there any other questions from members of the board? All right, thank you so much, Chief. Next up, we have Early Learning Center slash Program, Dr. Chris Bearden.
You rolled.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, board members, and Superintendent Simmons. This afternoon, my goal is to provide an update on the Department of Early Learning. These are our non-negotiables. Be professional, be accountable, communicate effectively. Our focus areas, literacy, enrollment, attendance, discipline, solving. Our mission and vision, vision, distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools. Mission to empower each student to graduate college and career ready. Our roadmap to success. Today's presentation will address family and community engagement and student achievement, those two goals. Okay, our presentation, this presentation objectives are as follows. Communicate the current state of GSCS pre-K early learning program, the current kindergarten readiness and pre-K enrollment, current stakeholder interest in early learning expansion, the superintendent's vision for early learning. With that being said, GS, uh-oh, okay. GSCS pre-K kindergarten program has 22 classes located in our, in our system's 11 elementary schools. Each class has a lead teacher and an assistant teacher of whom are trained to work with the needs of four-year-olds in their families. Our pre-K overall objectives, objectives are health, child development, and kindergarten readiness. Teacher, oh, sorry. Teacher-student ratio. We currently have 409 students enrolled in our pre-K program with a capacity of serving 432 children. One teacher, one paraprofessional per 20 students per regular general education pre-K classes. We have four inclusion classes located at Jackson Road Elementary School in Oars Elementary. In those classes, we have two teachers and one paraprofessional with a capacity of serving 18 students in those classes. Also, our GSCS DES and SNPS partners with McIntosh Trail Learning Center to offer one three-year-old general ed class at Jordan Hill, and our GSCS DES, S, special needs pre-K school has six three-year-old pre-K classrooms at Moreland Row in Beaverbrook. There is a typo on there, which is the number five, but there are six. In general, our pre-K classrooms are state-funded through the DCA grant, lottery-funded educational program for all age-eligible four-year-old children in Georgia, regardless of the family's income. Now to talk about another focus area, which is pre-K readiness. We have surveyed our pre-K parents in the past to determine how many students attended a daycare or early learning center prior to enrolling in our GSCA, GSCS pre-K program. Uh, there were 41 surveys submitted, and 93% of our pre-K students returned their survey or were able to be reached to complete the survey over the phone. Of those 93%, 42% attended some type of daycare or early learning program prior to enrolling in our GSCS pre-K program. We all know that pre-K is optional, and a lot of parents sometimes do opt out, and they do not want their children to participate in our, in our pre-K program. So what does all of this means? So when our students arrive to kindergarten, this is the first time that we are able to assess them on kindergarten readiness and showing, uh, showing that they can demonstrate readiness in ELA in math. So the assessment is G Kids Readiness Checklist. It is a component of the G, Georgia Kindergarten Inventory of Developing Skills. It is designed to be administered during the first six weeks of kindergarten, which is pretty much in August and the first week of September. The goal of this assessment is to provide information about the skills of students entering kindergarten. So our focus was ELA in math, and the percentages are displayed historically, like from 2017 up until this past August of fall of 2024. So in fall of 2020, you can start to see a decline due to COVID and the pandemic. Fall of 2020, ELA was 32% demonstrated readiness, math, it was 33%. Fall of 2021, 24% demonstrated readiness, and math, 25%. Fall of 2022, 25% demonstrated readiness in ELA, and, uh, 30% in math. Fall of 2023, we saw a slight, uh, increase in ELA, which was 26% demonstrated readiness. And in math, there was a little decline down to 26 cent, 26%. Fall of 2024, there was a huge increase this past August. A demonstrating readiness in ELA was 47%, and in math was 50%, and that was a great recovery. Stakeholder interest, the superintendent's vision is to expand opportunities for our pre-K three-year-olds. As a result, we disseminated a stakeholder interest survey in the fall of 2023. The results are as follows. This is question one. Do you have a child who will turn three years old on or before September 1 of 2024? The total of respondents was 300, and we received 396 responses. 51% of the respondents replied yes, and 48% replied no. Questions two and three were skipped due to, it was demographic information, like your name and what school did, do you attend? Question four. Are you interested in a free three-year-old pre-K program within GSCS to better prepare your child for kindergarten readiness? There were 396 responses. 86% of the respondents replied yes, and 13% replied no. Question five. Are you interested in a paid three-year-old pre-K program within GSCS to better prepare your child for kindergarten readiness? 386 responses. 59% of the respondents replied yes, 40% replied no. And question six of the survey asked, if you, if interested in an early, in early learning opportunities, would transportation be an issue? We received 384 responses. 21% of the respondents replied yes, 78% replied no. In question seven, it focuses on the models of a three-year-old pre-K program, which is full day, half day, or two to three days a week. Uh, we received 373 responses. 83% selected full day model. 32% of the respondents selected half-day model, and 31% selected two to three days a week model. This concludes the Early Learning Department presentation. The aim was to give you an update, uh, an update, an idea of the pre-K programs we offer at this time. Also kindergarten readiness data, stakeholder interest in pre-K 3, and Dr. Simmons' vision to expand pre-K 3 offerings in our district. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bearden. Uh, board members, are there any questions for Dr. Bearden? Ms. McDonnell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Dr. Bearden. I'm back on page 11 where you gave the readiness data, the, uh, G Kids readiness data. So I'm, I'm impressed with the, the differences in fall '23 to fall '24. So for the 47% of ELA that passed it, how do we, how do we as a organization? What's the prescription for the 53% of the kids that were, were not ready for that, for ELA? How, how do we get them ready?
Uh, my recommendation would be for them prior to entering kindergarten. We offer the Rising Kindergarten Summer School Program. It is a six-week program with a six-and-a-half-hour day full of instruction that reflects a regular kindergarten day.
Okay, maybe I didn't phrase that right. Okay. For ELA on the chart that you just went over, 47% are ready. Is that the way I read that? 53% are not ready.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how do we get the 53% ready? I'm not talking about pre.
Okay.
What do I do, what do I, what would I do as an employee of Griffin Spalding to help that 53% move up the?
The kindergarten teachers will provide intense phonics, uh, numeracy skills, and other individualized instruction to help support those students to get to the point that they need to be.
Okay, and I know with 20 students in a kindergarten class, if it was.
Kindergarten, I, I don't, I don't know if there's a limit for kindergarten.
Okay.
Now, they, these students are leaving pre-K in rising kindergarten, the 53% that you're asking about.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So that's pretty much the kindergarten curriculum that they offer, state standards, and other ELA, um, supportive phonics instruction that can support those 53% that are not where they need to be.
Okay, because I, I would think that.
But you remember now that this was given the first six weeks of.
Right.
School, so they have the entire year.
Correct.
To try to engage in other intensive instruction in the classroom that can support some gain and progression throughout the year.
Right, okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Bearden. Next up, we have the January 2025 CCRPI presentation by Dr. Audrey Greer.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Board and Superintendent Simmons. Tonight, I would like to provide you with an update of our College and Career Ready Performance Index. Of course, we have our non-negotiables, which are to be professional, be accountable, and communicate effectively, and our focus areas leads. We have our mission and vision and our roadmap to success. Today's presentation will primarily focus on goal number four, student achievement. Our single objective today is to communicate the Georgia Department of Education 2024 College and Career Ready Performance Index results. We know that recently this data was unembargoed back in December. However, we have been more than aware of this data since the GMAS assessments back in the spring of 2024. When you think about College and Career Ready Performance Index, it's important to know that there have been numerous changes since its inception. As of 2020, 2018, CCRPI uses an up- As of 2018, CCRPI uses an updated calculation approved as part of Georgia's State Plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act, also known as ESSA. In 2020, there were no CCRPI reports due to COVID, and in 2021, there were no CCRPI summary scores for the state, school districts, or schools. As we get into the data today, I do want to start by highlighting some strengths of our data. I thank all of the principals who are here today because there are some tremendous accolades that we can show just based on what we see with the strengths in our data. As a whole, the Griffin Spalding County Schools has improved in eight of the 13 CCRPI components. I think that's definitely something that we can clap about. We also improved content mastery in both the elementary and high school levels. We improved at the high school progress or for the high school progress. Middle school did decrease in progress, but it was only by one percentage point. We increased our elementary closing the gaps score. We also increased our scores in elementary school, middle school, and high school readiness. So that tells us that our students across the board are more ready today than they were in the past. Lastly, we increased our graduation rate. So again, these are all things to celebrate for the district. We also have some notable accomplishments for individual schools, and I see several of those schools sitting in the audience today. Atkinson, Jackson Road, and Oars Elementary School all improved in all 13 CCRPI components. Let's give them a round of applause. Cowan Elementary School and Crescent Elementary School improved in three of the four components. Griffin High School and Spalden High School improved in four of the five components. The highest content mastery for the district goes to Crescent Elementary School, Futural Elementary School, and Jackson Elementary School. And all three of those leaders are here tonight. The highest progress goes to Jackson Road Elementary School, Moreland Road Elementary School, and Oars Elementary School. The schools with the highest closing the gaps scores are Atkinson, Jackson Road, and Beaverbrook. And lastly, the schools with the highest readiness scores are Crescent, Futural, and Jordan Hill. This next category is definitely to be commended. These schools are performing at or above the Georgia Department of Education's score. So for progress, Jackson Road, Moreland, Oars, Carver Middle School, and Griffin High School all performed at or above the state's progress score. Atkinson and Jackson Road performed at or above the state's closing gaps score. And Crescent and Spalden High School performed at or above the state's readiness score. So while we have strengths with our data, we also have challenges with our data. And before I get into that, I do want to highlight just some of the things that come out of the data, and that is, one, the identification of our designated schools. Schools are designated as either CSI, ATSI, or TSI. Based on the 2024 data, we have one Tier IV CSI school, that is Ann Street Elementary School. We have two CSI schools that are also UVA schools, including Atkinson and Moore. I do want to give a huge shout-out to Atkinson because they did show a 5% point, percentage point increase in content mastery from 2023 to 2024. And they have a component score of 80 or higher in one of their other components, thus giving them tremendous progress. Moore also is a CSI and a UVA school. We have two ATSI schools, including Moreland and Oars. Oars is a UVA school as well. Atkinson, Moore, and Oars are all a part of those accelerated zones. To support these designated schools, we have structured literacy coaches in all of those elementary schools that are designated. We also have school improvement coordinators here at the district office that work more intentionally with the school leaders and the teachers at these schools. In addition to those district plans of support, we are continuously supporting and have been supporting schools since the beginning of the school year through professional learning days that are sprinkled out throughout the school calendar. With literacy development, we are wrapping up our second cohort for letters implementation. We are implementing map reading fluency as well as Orton-Gillingham in our K-2 classrooms. Last year, we were able to roll out the new math standards and train all of our teachers. This year, we are continuing that training as well as training on the state's new ELA standards, which will be implemented in the '25-'26 school year. Last year, we were able to adopt new instructional materials for literacy and for science. And we are continuing the training to better support the implementation of that process. We have a plan of supports district-wide, and we also have individualized school report or supports for the acceleration zone schools. We have three elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school that are a part of those acceleration zones. We also have the induction phase mentor program that we're offering through HR. And with that, we have intentional support for our novice science and social studies teachers. I do want to take a moment and go back to the second to the last bullet, which is our EOC, year-long courses. This is the first year we've implemented that. And with the EOC year-long courses, we have very few students at either one of our high schools taking the end-of-course exam in December, which is when many of them would take the assessment. With year-long classes in place, they will have more time and more practice with the curriculum so that they are able to take it and be prepared to do so in April. What you see here is a compilation of efforts, not just from TLE. I'm presenting on behalf of TLE, but what you see here is the support of human resources, student support services, as well as teacher and leader effectiveness to support teachers and leaders and address the data that you are preparing to see. For your reference, I have included the student demographic data just so that you can see how we fare according to the schools in our RISA as well as the Georgia Department of Education. Now to the data. The first component is elementary school content mastery. Content mastery addresses whether students are achieving at the level necessary to be prepared for the next grade, college, or career. Achievement scores are calculated in ELA, math, science, and social studies, and it's based on the Georgia milestones as well as the GAA assessments. If you take a look at the data, overall, we have a score of 44. We have an increase in both ELA and science from 2023 to 2024 for elementary school content mastery. The second area, or the second component, it is elementary school progress. Progress measures how much growth students demonstrate in ELA and math and how well ELL students are progressing towards English language proficiency. As you can see, we took a slight dip overall in this particular domain, and we also slipped in ELA, math, and our performance for our ELL students. The next component, the third component, is elementary school closing the gaps. Closing the gaps sets the expectation that all students and all student subgroups make improvements in achievement rates. What I would like to focus your attention on, Board, is the legend in the lower left-hand corner, which simply is a green flag with a star, which means the subgroup met their improvement target. The green flag, which also means that they met the improvement target. The gold flag, which means the subgroup made progress but did not meet the improvement target. And lastly, the red flag, which means the subgroup did not make progress nor meet the improvement target. If you take a moment, you can see that we have green, gold, and red flags across ELA and science subgroups. You will not see any flags in the math category because last year was the first time we administered the assessment with the new math standards. The last component for elementary school is readiness. Readiness measures whether students are participating in activities, preparing them for, and demonstrating readiness for the next level, college, or career. We had a slight increase here of 75.3 as a total score. We saw increases in the percentage of students reading at or above grade level in reading, which is how we measure our LexIs. We also saw an increase in student attendance, and we saw a slight decrease in beyond the core. That beyond the core score is the calculation of students participating in our specials classes. For your reference, I have included the summary of our performance compared to the Georgia Department of Education and again, to other systems in our RISA. The next component for the district is middle school content mastery. Just like elementary school, we're looking at our students' performance in ELA, math, science, and social studies on the Georgia milestones as well as the GAA. We have an overall score of 41 here. We do see dips in ELA, science, and social studies. Middle school closing the gaps. Again, we're focusing in on the legend and the flags that you see under ELA, science, and social studies. Looking at this data, it is clear that we simply have some work to do, and we are working with leaders and teachers at the middle school level to address these data points to ensure that we can meet the needs of all student subgroups. Middle school progress is down slightly with an overall score of 79. We did have a slight decrease in both ELA and math and an increase in the progress towards English language proficiency. We have an access test that is administered to our ESOL students in late January through the 1st of March, and that score report is used to determine students' proficiency here with our EL students. Middle school readiness had an increase by one point to an overall score of 73.5. Readiness measures, again, whether or not students are participating in activities, preparing them for, and demonstrating readiness for the next level, college, or career. We did have a slight decrease with the percentage of students reading at or above the grade level reading, which is again our LexIs. We had a slight decrease with student attendance and an increase with our beyond-the-core performance. And again, like the elementary school data, I've included for your reference a snapshot of our comparison against the Georgia Department of Education as well as other school districts in our RISA. As we transition to high school, we will see the same components. We have an overall content mastery score for high school of 45.5 with an increase in American literature, decreases in biology and US history, and again, no comparison point for our algebra, given that it was our first administration in the spring of 2024. For our closing the gaps, we have an overall score of 41.7. Again, you see the colored flags, red, green, and gold, and you also see one flag there, green with a gold star. With our high school readiness, we had an increase here. Our overall score is 68.5. We saw increases in several areas, including the percentage of students that are at or above the grade level reading level, our student attendance, and our accelerated enrollment. That accelerated enrollment score that you see there is a percentage of students that are enrolled in our AP programs and possibly our dual enrollment programs as well. You see an increase in our college and career readiness score as well and a slight decrease in our pathway completion score. For the pathway completion, please note that that includes completers for your CTAE, your fine arts, and your world language programs. The next area is high school progress. We have an overall score here of 78. If you look at that jump for high school progress, they had an increase of a little over 15 percentage points from the previous year in high school progress. Let's give our high schools a round of applause. We saw increases here in math as well as progress towards English language proficiency. Keeping in mind that, in this case, math is looking at the students' progress from eighth to ninth grade and the percentage of students who may have performed better from eighth grade going into ninth grade when they actually took the assessment. I think by now, we know that we have increased our high school graduation rate, which is also another reason to give our high schools a round of applause. Our overall score there is 85.1, just a tad bit below that of the state. We saw an increase in both our four-year and our five-year graduation rates. And lastly, again, for your reference, you have our comparison of our district to the Georgia DOE as well as to other school districts in our RISA. I have provided you with a summary of our CCRPI data today. The overall school district report as well as individual school reports can be accessed today via the Georgia Department's CCRPI portal. Do you have any questions at this time?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have heard the CCRPI presentation from Dr. Audrey Greer at this time. I am going to, your light is on. So Ms. McDonald, let's go with Ms. Weldon first. So I recognize Ms. Weldon of the fourth.
Okay, I'm counting you at this. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I've got a question on the high school comparison. It shows that content mastery is 45.5, and then the graduation rate is 85.1. Why is there such a big discrepancy between those two numbers?
So content mastery is based on completion of those four EOC courses, including algebra, which is a ninth-grade course, biology, which is a 10th-grade course, American literature, and US history, both of which are 11th-grade courses. Content mastery and graduation rate are two different indicators. Graduation rate is based on cohort data. It depends on when students entered high school and when they exited high schools, okay?
I have another question. Are we retaining students in elementary and middle school?
We do have instances in which we retain students in elementary and middle school. Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questioning, Ms. Weldon?
No.
All right, Ms. McDonald of the fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Dr. Greer, for this information. Last December, when we were up in Atlanta for the Georgia School Board Association Winter Conference, we witnessed a talk from Marietta City Schools, and the superintendent spoke to us about hiring. I'm a firm believer, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you can't read, you're not going to be too successful. And I think we all would agree, in our system, we have a lot of people, we have a lot of students, excuse me, that are not reading on a level. In my opinion, I believe, I can't remember the superintendent's name, but they had a thousand students in the elementary schools that were reading below level. And once they implemented reading strategist, reading specialist, they were able to close the gaps of between 400 and 500 of those students. My question is, do you feel like that, I just feel like we need to- I just feel like we need to place a lot of emphasis on reading because if a child can't read, a child will not be successful. So what are we going to do moving forward to close the gaps of our students that are not reading on a level?
So I think that concern actually is one that's across the state, Ms. McDonald. It is one that really birthed House Bill 538 and what we see coming out of it. So we do have three schools right now in our school district that have structured literacy coaches. And with those individuals, they are specifically focusing on literacy for K-2. We do have coaches at all of our other elementary schools, but in addition to that, we have adopted the MAP Read Influency Program as our reading screener to get a better idea of how students are performing. And with that, we can provide more interventions and support to our students. We also have the literacy-based programs that we talked about, including Letters and Orton-Gillingham, that teachers are implementing in the classroom as well.
Do you believe our system would benefit from reading specialists brought in? And I believe, as I recall, the superintendent at Marietta City Schools had to do away with some positions to bring in reading specialists. I don't know how many he had per school after they identified those thousand students. But do you believe reading specialists in our system would be of benefit?
I think any additional support that can be offered to schools would be beneficial and much appreciated.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right. Mr. Holmes of the third, you're welcome, Dean of the Board.
Yes, sir. Dr. Greer, you know, we had a conversation, and you told me something that was quite interesting in looking at this report. I only saw one area where it didn't seem to have a direct correlation. But you told us when we met with you that attendance was a problem. Could you, if it pleases the board, Mr. Chair, could you kind of give us a synopsis on that? Or if you don't mind, Dr. Greer?
So if you go back to the readiness slides, those are the slides that will reflect attendance. So I'm going to first go to elementary school. As you can see, right there at the bottom, student attendance for elementary school increased a little over a point and a half from the twenty-twenty-three school year. For middle schools, it went down slightly, but that's not even a point that it went down. And then for high school, I think the attendance improved for high school readiness as well. It did. It went up, what is that, seven and a half points, give or take. So we do have some improvements with attendance. It's definitely something to be commending our school leaders with the efforts that they have put in place for attendance.
Any further questions, Leah Holmes?
No, thank you, Dr. Greer.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Greer, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Happy New Year. I have, as you know, always, when it comes to student achievement, I have questions. And so the first question, I want to go back to Ms. McDonald's question. Can you go to slide ten? Slide ten. On slide ten, you have listed many different things that we could do to, you know, support, you know, what we're doing. But what I think the question is, and maybe the superintendent wants to want to jump in on this as well, how do we monitor the implementation with Fidelity for the various supports that we have and that you've listed on slide ten?
You want me to go forward? So some of the things, like if you take a look at the first bullet, professional learning days, that second bullet there, too, also is wrapped up in professional learning as well as the third bullet wrapped up in professional learning. If you recall, we have a program called Kick Up. And Kick Up is where we not only provide opportunities for teachers to register for professional learning, but they are also able to give feedback. The leaders across the school district, school and district leaders are also able to monitor implementation of these programs in the classrooms, and we can monitor that through Kick Up. We have a district walkthrough tool that all schools use, monitoring instruction, and we're able to...
Dr. Greer, so in monitoring through Kick Up, is that done? Or maybe the superintendent can answer this. Is that done on a monthly basis, on a quarterly basis? How is that done? And how can the board members receive that information as it relates to how it's been implemented with Fidelity?
So it really just depends on that person's practice. I look at it weekly. I have conversations about what is and what isn't in Kick Up and other data repositories. More importantly, it's about the questions that you ask of those individuals who are putting the data into the platform. I had a conversation with a principal just today reflecting on that leader's practice, but also what that leader intends to do based on what's in Kick Up or any other repository. With regards to what the board can do to be informed of it, truthfully, I would prefer that the board not get into that because what you may find is that people are considering whether or not that information is an evaluative effort. We didn't purchase Kick Up to evaluate that piece of the data. What we did is we purchased Kick Up to try and create some alignment with regards to the practices that we implement and whether or not those practices yield the outputs. If the board really wants that data, then we can talk about what portions of that data that the board would like to see, and then we can maybe develop whatever comings from that. But Kick Up is just one of them. I have access to a litany of databases, data visualizations, and the such, all of those things that we use to try and figure out how are the practices that we're implementing? How are the professional learning plans, the professional learning activities that we're implementing? What are the impacts that they're having, not only on the leaders, not only on the teachers, but also those who support the leaders and the teachers? And then you get all the way down to the student.
All right. Great. Thank you. And of course, your guidance is always needed in that in sharing with us what we need to know to make any changes or, you know, financially supporting how we can furthermore, you know, support implementation of these programs or other programs that you may have that support the mission and vision of the district and student achievement, scholar achievement. All right. And so Ms. Weldon of the fourth asked about this question when she asked about the discrepancy. And so my question is, let's look at slide eighteen. So slide eighteen gives us our middle school closing gap. And slide twenty-three, let's go to twenty-three, gives us our high school closing gaps. And so we're down compared, if you look at the state middle school score and if you look at the high school state score, we're down. And middle school is about fifty-two points, and in high school, we're down about forty points. And so, you know, talking points, buzzwords, and we talk about differentiated instruction, what teachers are doing in order to teach the content, whether they are pulling out small groups or whatever the case may be. But how do we use differentiated instruction to address the performance of these various subpopulations?
The subpopulations you see at the bottom there are our EL students as well as our students with disabilities. Some of those students are in small group classrooms just to access the curriculum. Outside of that, we are also providing DI in the classroom. We have intervention programs that are taking place during that when time. That's the instructional focus time that is taking place at all three levels, elementary, middle school, and high.
What does when stand for? What's that when time?
What I need, whatever I need. That instructional focus time is offered for about forty-five to fifty minutes at all levels. It is during that time, Mr. Brown, that in elementary school and middle school, that they use the I-Radi program, if you recall. We adopted I-Radi. That I-Radi program provides students with a personalized learning path, and based on those paths, students perform in different groups. This system supports the groups by outlining lessons for each individual group, and that is how the students are able to take part in some differentiated instruction in the classroom.
Okay. All right. And so, and that's across the board. So those things are done in middle school and in high school, so that answers my question. My next question is, and it goes back to maybe our conversations that we had, Dr. Simmons, last year, when we started talking about UVA partnerships. Now, the UVA partnerships should impact improved student achievement and as an output. How was the student achievement in the acceleration schools impacted as it relates to UVA and their success or their lack of success?
So one school I will highlight that you saw in our accomplishments was Atkinson Elementary School. Atkinson is one of our UVA schools. If you look at this particular document, Atkinson and Oars improved in all of the components for elementary school. So I think that that's something that is definitely to be celebrated. It's the work, and not just of what we're doing in the district, but the work that they're doing with the UVA as well. You also see Atkinson down here with the highest closing gaps score. They made some tremendous progress in closing the gaps with those subgroups that you just noted for middle school and high school.
And we're definitely here to celebrate the successes, but we're also here to have the tough conversations. And so as it leads back to, I guess, an overarching question is, and looking at slides twelve, seventeen, and twenty-two, we're twenty-three points lower than the Georgia average for content mastery for elementary school, middle school, and high school. What is our plan? And we've talked about, we talked about the differentiated instruction. We discussed all these plans. But what is the true plan to improve these scores?
So, Mr. Chair, I think before we can, or if we really want to talk about the true plan, I would ask the board to revisit the conversation around school restructuring. We have some elementary schools that are extremely hemorrhaging when it comes to enrollment. And what you have in cases like that is you have one classroom that makes up a grade level. And in that one classroom, you are given very little wiggle room for missing the target. When you have multiple schools in that circumstance, those schools are working just as hard as the neighboring schools that have, you know, bulging enrollment. The difference is the context. And should those schools not be able to meet those targets in that one classroom, which makes up that one grade level, then it weighs heavily on the rest of the elementary school performance. So that's why I spoke with you a year or so ago about maybe revisiting those school structures so that we don't have schools where one classroom represents the entire grade. Because heaven help us if that teacher in flu season catches the flu because the whole grade level at that point is pretty much compromised. But that's where that plan would start. With regards to, you know, if the question is the day-to-day actions, we have things like SIP check-ins. We have things like school improvement coordinators. We have things like continuous improvement teams, continuous improvement team check-ins. We have a litany of HR practices in which we're trying to minimize the amount of time that a vacancy is gone without being filled. We're trying to maximize the amount of time in which we can provide professional learning to teachers. I don't like to say, but I will say, we have several classrooms in front of several students who have the teacher who's never taught a day in his or her life before coming to Griffin Spalding. That's a reality, and in some ways, that score is a reflection of that. That's why you hear me talk about trying to find ways to pay our teachers more than other larger counties are paying our teachers, trying to find ways to get the teachers that we trained for a year to not take that training and go somewhere else. It is a very complex recipe that we're dealing with. I didn't intend for the principals to come and hear that part. I wanted them to see and be a part of the recognition. But at the end of the day, the plan is more than just teaching and learning. The plan is resourcing, the plan is investing, the plan is structuring, the plan is looking at to what extent are we able to ensure that we have the best, most qualified instructor in front of those who need the best, most qualified instructor? And I'll be honest, as the superintendent, I've got some schools, as the principal, it's very difficult to staff them, very difficult to staff them. But we have people in front of those children, and those scores are a reflection of that. That's not to say that we're not getting better. It simply means that what may be a plan in one district that's on a page, that page may be five pages in that school. And so, great question, but the answer that she's going to give you is really going to be at the surface level because she's really talking T and L at this point. But you'd still have to talk about S3, the work of ensuring that chronic absenteeism isn't a part of the conversation. You have to talk about human resources, trying to figure out how to protect. When we find good teachers and other people realize we have good teachers, they come after our good teachers. So we have some stuff. It's a fight. It's a war. Because at the end of the day, as I said to my counterparts at the State Department, why doesn't the state show you their red and green arrow? And I may be the only one who wonders, when I look at that screen, why am I looking at only red and green arrows for what's happening in Griffin? Trust me when I tell you, there are red and green arrows in the state of Georgia. And one could be there if the state wanted to put it that way. Not trying to create an argument or throw anybody under the bus, but that's still part of the context.
Yeah, and it answered my question, but then also when you said, great question, but. So we know that there are many different, there are many different things that go into why scores are low. And so you mentioned, you know, S3, Student Support Services. You mentioned, you know, other departments that help and aid in that. And so it seems like from what you've shared and things that you've sent in the past, we've seen the plan for teaching and learning. So I think now it's time to start sharing the plans for other departments that support to be able to get us to where we are. So in doing that, in making sure that we have plans that support and speak to this, it helps. Because you're right, we have vacancies. We want to maximize that time. We have several classroom teachers that have never taught before. Twelve years ago, I was in that situation, never stepped in a classroom before. I was working for the Georgia State Senate and Senate Press and enjoyed doing tours and talking about Georgia. And so, hey, I'm going to go teach Georgia Studies. And was very successful, but there were things that they were able to do to help me to be successful in that. And we're doing those things for our teachers here. But I would love to see, and I'm sure other board members would love to see those plans, student support. What is the plan for them to support any other department that support our scholars? So thank you for answering that and bringing in the other complex issues that support it. Thank you so much. And so those are all the questions I have for this presentation, Ms. McDonald.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Greer, and thank you, Dr. Simmons. Actually, Dr. Simmons and I had that conversation in Atlanta. Because when I went into education, I knew I was going to be there for probably thirty years or more. Today, it's totally different, and everyone in this room knows that. Griffin Spalding could be a diving board to, you know, going up north and join the union and teach. You know, it's, we've got to figure out, another component of this is behavior in the classroom. I was a great teacher as far as keeping order in my room. I just have the skills to do that. And what I was speaking to Dr. Simmons about is that perhaps we could bring teachers back to help those in the rooms that were, keeping behavior under control is very difficult. I mean, I would love to do that because teachers would come to my room and go, God, McDonald, how do you do that? Well, you just do it. But it's a skill set I came with. It's not a skill set that had to be made. Does that make sense? So I believe with everything that Mr. Brown and Dr. Simmons have said, we also need to support those classrooms that have terrible behavior in the classroom. It's of no fault to the teacher. It could be a teacher that just got the degree, that has zero experience. But I believe if we, one of the components of this is if we get behavior under control, kids can learn. I think everyone in this room would agree to that. So what I would like for Dr. Simmons and the cabinet and leaders in buildings to discuss, what, perhaps what teachers in your building need help with behavior and help strengthen the skill set they come to our organization with? Because I think that's a really key component.
All right. So were we able to capture all those things that we? No problem, sir.
What I captured was the board would like to see... What I captured was, the board would like to see what the plans are for the divisions outside of TL and E, but also to include what the plans are to improve things like behavior and some of the other nuances that may be contributing to the struggle to accelerate improvement in some of these areas. We'll get that captured and packaged for you, and then we can talk about that as well.
Thank you so much. Dr. Greer, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Greer.
And to the teachers out there, thank you so much for what you do as well. Thank y'all. All right, next up is First Read Policy GCR-A1 Drug Screening of Bus Drivers. Let's welcome Mrs. Ashley Evans.
Good evening, Board Chair Brown, Board members, and Superintendent Simmons. The Human Resources Department is presenting Board Policy GCR-A, Drug Screening of Bus Drivers for First Reading. The board and district are collaboratively reviewing and updating all board policies. Board Policy GCR-A1 Drug Screening of Bus Drivers is recommended for revision at this time to include all GSCS drivers transporting students. Regulation GCR-A1-R1 has been updated to support Policy GCR-A1. Our next steps are that the district will post Board Policy GCR-A1 Drug Screening of Bus Drivers on Assembly to receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days, after which the policy will be brought to the subsequent business meeting for second reading and final board adoption. The change reflects a broader commitment to enhance student and employee safety.
All righty, board members, we've heard the presentation from Mrs. Evans. Are there any questions for her in regards to Policy GCR-A1? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Next up, Policy IDCH Dual Enrollment, First Read, Dr. Lenika Pruitt. Did I say that right?
Lenika.
Lenika, all right, Dr. Pruitt, thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Brown, Board members, and Superintendent Simmons. The district is presenting Policy IDCH for dual enrollment for first read. The board and the district are collaborative reviewing and updating all board policies. This policy currently does not have any changes nor revisions. However, I would like to note that we've adopted a regulation which is taken straight from the Georgia Student Finance Commission. This is the state regulated agency for all dual enrollment programs in the state of Georgia. The policy will be posted in Assembly to receive input from the board members and the stakeholders for 30 days, after which, in an upcoming meeting, the policy will be presented for second reading for final board adoption.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pruitt. Board members, we've heard the presentation from Dr. Pruitt as it relates to Policy IDCH. Any questions? All right, hearing none. Next up is Dr. Lisa Moore, Policy JVC School Admissions, First Read.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Board members, Superintendent Simmons. I am here to present the revision of school admissions for first reading. Board Policy JVC School Admissions is recommended as presented. The policy has been revised to remove regulatory language and to include the Georgia State law statute. The district will post Policy JVC into Assembly to receive input from the board members and stakeholders for 30 days, and after 30 days, the policy will be brought to a subsequent board meeting for second reading and final board adoption. And again, this is for JVC School Admissions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Moore. Board members, we've heard the presentation from Dr. Moore as it relates to Policy JVC on school admissions. Are there any questions? All right, thank you so much, Dr. Moore. Next up, Mr. Byron Jones, Money Bag Yo, Fiscal Year 26 Budget Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board again. I want to cover a, basically a six-month calendar with you right quick on what our plans are for budgeting. We started this process last year trying to give you a snapshot of what to expect. So tonight, we're here, first item, to just go over the calendar with you. And this calendar is designed for the board input, public hearing and that stuff. There's all kind of work going on behind the scenes with the principals that we'll be rolling out in the next few weeks, so all that goes on behind the scenes with the departments. Tuesday, February 11th, work session will be at four. We will bring another presentation to you and tell you what we know at this point from maybe the legislative update by that point, any kind of ideas that we've come up with that we would want to share with you. Then we'll come back in in March. If you'll notice, I say on here, Tuesday, March 4th, that's actually a BOE retreat. We're still trying to set a date, I believe, to be determined on a work session date in March, so we don't have that date yet. We'll come back to you on that. And if, as you'll notice, as we go down this schedule for the new board members, we tried to schedule all of this on existing days, even if there was a gap of time to not create a special meeting. I think we'll be able to do that as long as we stick to this schedule. March 28th, we have generally given a budget notebook to the Board of Education, that's going to be our goal again this year, so we should be able to hit that target. First public hearing, Tuesday, April 1st, 3:30 PM. So by law, we have to have two public hearings before we adopt any budget, and we look at our tentative budget for that process, and we'll do that public hearing April 1st, and we'll have a work session at four, which I will actually give you more detail at that meeting which is following the public hearing. And then you'll notice there's like a two-week gap, a two- to three-week gap, because the spring break's actually in the middle of that, and we didn't want to call a special meeting in between. So we'll hold the second public hearing on Tuesday, April 22nd, 5:30. Then we'll have our business meeting where we ask you to adopt the tentative budget at 6 o'clock PM. Then we have some regulatory compliance things where we need to be putting stuff in the newspaper and/or, or and on our website, which will happen that same week of the 22nd. We'll come back on May 6th for a work session, present the final budget. We won't have a public hearing that day. We'll hold the public hearing May 20th before. We will ask you to adopt the final budget at 6 o'clock PM, again, in May, on May 20th. And then we'll post that on our website, and then at that point, the Milagre hearings again, could be anytime from that point on. You know, it was a little bit later this year, sometimes it gets into July, August, September. So when that date is available from the assessors' office and the commissioners, we'll guide us a little bit more when those hearings would be. So are there any questions on the calendar at this point?
All righty, board members, we've heard the presentation from Mr. Jones. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much. Money Bag Yo. All right, you got one more item up there, all right? November 2024 Monthly Board Financial Report.
All righty, board members, because of the way the dates fell in December and early January, this is a November financial report. We'll come back in two weeks and do the December financial report, and then we'll come back in February and be back on track. So again, this is a little bit of stale data for November. $30 million fund balance, that's the bottom left yellow item. Remember in our item earlier, public hearing when Hope was talking, we finished at 45 million, so because we had the reserve, we haven't had to borrow any money, you can see that our fund balance has decreased. It'll go back up here soon with our tax collections. Over to the right, bottom yellow, Nutrition's got about a $3.5 million fund reserve at this point. Again, this is through November. General Fund Operating Statement, 27 million has been collected so far through November 30th, 42 million has been spent, that is a deficit of 15 million. We have collected 20 to 25 million in the last few weeks. So again, it may be the January financial report before all that really self-corrects, but that kind of gives you a snapshot of why that cash balance on hand is important. Page three is Special Revenues, so these are grants, Title I. Again, you'll see some ESER in the third column. We don't have an ESER in this year, but we had some carryover money that we had to spend by September 30th, so that's why that's showing up in this current year. Page four is the Nutrition Operating Statement, 3.5 million in revenue through November, 3.4 million in expense, so about, about close to $65,000 to the good right now for the current year. Yes, sir. It's going to be your, I guess it will be the fourth, third column, fourth column, however you want to read that, it says ESER 3 on it there. Again, that was money we had to spend by September 30th, that was carryover money, so that's actually gone now. All right, on page five, our investments. So again, we handle all of the SPOLOST accounts, investment accounts. We're down to 4.69%. Again, that's trending downward on our investment income. It's about $102, $103 million that we're holding in investments. Again, that's through November. SPOLOST 7 collections, and this is, actually runs a month and a year, so through October, well, October was 1.2 million, which is about 4.7 million that we've collected so far for the new SPOLOST. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much. Any other questions, board members? All right, hearing none. Next up, School Year 2526 School Calendar. Oh, informational item, oh, okay. Is there, because it's cut off, my agenda's cut off right here, what is that? Oh, okay. Information, all right. Okay. So what I would recommend is that we wait till Mr. Register is in person, and we can have that discussion so that it is not individually, but it's collective what the board wants to do. And in the interim, if you could maybe give us one or two options that we can choose from, you and I can work together to give the board some options, so we have a solid process in place that everybody can agree to and make additions and changes, and we can move from there.
Regards to the options, I'm not sure that I'm clear. Do you want something in advance, or help me understand?
So in regards to those options, our meetings are generally on Tuesdays at 1:00, so what we can do is, next Tuesday at 1:00, we can sit down and maybe look at some other districts, how they do things, and, but, and then find something that's tailored just for Griffin Spalding for us, and then we can share with the board, and then they can have their input, and then we can give direction on how to move forward with that. Thank you. All right, so we have our informational items, the School Year 2526 School Calendar. Hopefully, everybody has received that and it's online. At this time, we'll go to Governance Team Comments. We're going to start with the Dean of the Board, Leader Holmes.
Chair, I'd just like to end with just thanking everybody for what you do, and I hope everyone had a restful holiday season, and I know we're getting into the last, last quarter of the year, and I just encourage everyone to reload, find whatever you got to find to get people kind of re-energized, to finish strong. I do see that turn in our system. Some people don't realize that we're still recovering from the effects of the pandemic and things that kind of threw a lot of things off, not only in education, but just in our society. But I do see a turn, and I just thank that presentation Dr. Greer did, I thank you for that, because that was real informative of what we're actually dealing with, but...
And people watching or listening, some people that were here today just don't understand how hard the work is, they just don't. You know, when I had that conversation with Dr. Simmons in Atlanta, I went, you know, I was really good in the classroom as far as classroom management, but today, sometimes I'd like to go back in and try it again to see if I would-